Committee in order. Please rise. Yes, you join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other things.
Please take the roll.
Alderman Vassal.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Mayor Saquon.
All right, no special presentations tonight. Under the consent calendar, we've got the approval of minutes from the city council meeting from May 3rd, 2022, along with the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending May 13th, 2022. Need a motion approved, Sidemen?
Second.
Move by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
All right, no sealed bids tonight. Under my report, just one thing I'd like to cover, the Memorial Day service, annual service is going to be held on May 30th at 11 o'clock here at the community park as we have in the past, so if you could all get out and take part, that would be greatly appreciated. Just a word of information, the 23rd of May, the resurfacing or the median removal on Regentland Avenue will start, so just keep in mind that if you drive down Regentland Avenue for a short period of time, the idea is to get that median there that has been flaking off in the last 10 years or so removed. It's taken a while, but we were able to work on a deal with the county where we actually funded, they reimburse us, which is not normal, but it's a new way to get stuff done and get it done a little more quickly, so that will start on the 23rd of May. Mayor? Yes.
I got an email, Adam, that's been changed to June 1st. Is that correct, Regentland Avenue?
Yes, today, today the contractor called and they're looking to delay.
Go back to June 1st, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Two days ago was 23rd. Okay, great, thank you. Treasury report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Treasury's report for the month ending April 30th. General fund began the month with $5,886,824. Revenues for the month were $935,253. Expenses from the general fund totaled $897,129. Other source use, $42,660, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $5,967,609. Total of all funds started April with $23,506,144. Revenues totaled $1,987,824. Expenses for the month were $1,467,42. Other source use, $29,839, giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of $23,997,86. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do you retain a motion to approve the Treasury report?
So moved.
Move by Alderman McGrogan.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City attorney, no report. Any communications anyone have this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think I have one, it might be old news, I don't even know if this would be communications, but I found out the hard way. So, and if this was brought up, I apologize for bringing it up a second time, but these little cards that have the scavenger, the month of May was printed wrong, but it corrects itself back in June.
Right.
So, just in case anybody falls into.
Yeah, in reply to that, we also sent out a email blast to the website and to our social media contacts with that correction, so.
Okay.
It was on our end internally here, so appreciate it.
That's it.
Thanks a lot, Mike. All right.
What's wrong, excuse me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
What's wrong with it?
It shifted the month, it's when it says the day, the week is wrong.
The pickup date got reversed.
Two consecutive colors, yeah, it goes blue and. It's like blue and green? Green.
Yeah.
And there was two of them in a row.
Oh.
So, but after May, it gets back.
May is wrong, that's all.
May's wrong. Okay.
Yeah.
I found out the hard way, still have mine.
Yeah. All right, any other communications? Citizens wishing to address the council? Anyone have anything? Standing committees?
Somebody.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Sure. You name an address, please.
You got it. This time I'll remember the new one. Katie Pfizer, 12423 South 69th Court. I spoke at the last city council meeting to voice my support to remove the bushes and fence at Community Park. The alderman who spoke in favor of the bushes remaining in place seemed to be sticking by decisions made in the past. Tonight, I ask that the alderman consider the citizens' concerns regarding access to Community Park. At the last meeting, Mayor Strauss suggested you work together to find a solution. I appreciate your consideration.
Anyone?
Hi, I'm Tracy Fearetti-Maley. I live on 75th Avenue. I agree that that fence and those bushes should be removed. The kids are walking on 76th Avenue to get around the fence where it's all muddy and the land is all mushy and it's tough to walk there, because I walk over there to go and use the equipment that's around the walking path, et cetera, and it's dangerous, because you're on 76th Avenue for more than half a block extra. The kids used to be able to walk straight across 76th Avenue with their baseball equipment and beach bags and whatever else they carry, and they were right across the street. So if you're concerned about the safety, then you should paint a walkway across it and put a yield sign up for pedestrians, if that's the concern. But nobody was ever hit there before, and all of a sudden that fence went up and everybody's walking around in the mud and on 76th Avenue, so I think it's dangerous that it's there, and it's falling apart, so nobody's maintaining it. So I vote that it be removed.
Thank you.
And I am a longtime citizen here.
Very well.
Hi, Jennifer Schroeder. I live at 12034 South Richard Avenue. I didn't prepare anything formal, but I just came from a softball game, so I use the park probably five days a week in the summer. I am also strongly against the fence and the bushes. It makes no sense to have the kids cross diagonal across the street with all their things like Tracy brought up that they bring to the park or to the pool. It also makes no sense to have people enter at the city hall parking lot where all the cars are coming in. That's not safe either. So I think, you know, I was here years ago when we were against having the stop signs taken down and the fence put up in the first place, so I would like everyone to consider taking it down or finding a solution that is better, like a crosswalk painted on the street, you know, if the stop sign coming back is not an option, we at least need a crosswalk. The park deserves like an entrance so that the cars coming by know where the kids are going to cross. So I would hope that we could come up with, it's a nice park, you know, you want people to walk there instead of drive, but they need a way to get there and to get there safe. So I would just hope that, you know, you guys can find a solution that works for everyone. And if, you know, I've never heard of any accidents, like, you know, they say it's not safe, but we don't have any, you know, reported accidents, you know, it's definitely not safe having everyone flying across the street, you know, at a diagonal, like through the dirt, so in their strollers, on foot, bicycles, you name it. So I really hope that we can, you know, come to a solution that would be safe for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Party?
If I may, please.
Sure.
This is why I'm opposed to replacing these bushes.
Isn't this on the agenda?
This is 2016, daytime. The driver of the car missed the brakes and hit the accelerator from the stop sign on 120th Street. Thank God this happened in February rather than June, Saturday afternoon at 12:30 when everybody else is going hanging at the park, swimming pool, playing baseball, and everything else. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address the council? All right, reports, finance committee, Alderman McGrogan.
Mr. Mayor, we have one item on the agenda, it's number nine, and this is a motion that's going to extend the agreement between the city and the college, so it's a motion to approve the extension of an amendment to the voluntary payment agreement with Trinity Christian College.
Second.
Move by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes, and that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public safety, Alderman Vassal.
I have no items on the agenda this evening, Mayor, but I would just like to remind our residents that school will be dismissing for the summer, probably next week, or at least the latest, the week after, so be especially alert for a larger number of pedestrians on the street, children and parents who are walking, babies, et cetera, et cetera, and that's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you. Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to start by saying that it's actually National Public Works Week, which I guess goes from May 15th to 21st, and I just have to compliment our public works department, they are absolutely fantastic, they're professionals, they absolutely make our community a better place, they are the perfect example of what hard work looks like, and they're very dedicated to the job, and they make our infrastructure better, so, Adam, thank you, and I really appreciate you, and your team.
Yeah, well, you got him pinned tonight, just.
And so we do have the issue related to the removal of the split rail fence and the bushes, and I don't intend to take a whole lot of time with this, I just wanted to say again that I think from an aesthetic purpose and from the point of view that I now found out that those bushes are actually an invasive species that shouldn't actually even be planted, I think that it's time to take those bushes out. The fence is actually becoming dilapidated at this point, I don't know if, I didn't prepare, a lot of the bushes are actually dead now that it's summer, we can see that the bushes are actually not alive. Tracy kindly spoke, and she referred to how it's muddy in that area, and you can see that the ruts from the bicycles that come diagonally from 121st over to where the path connects have created this kind of unsightly mud path, so I think at the end of the day we've got an issue here at that section, I think it's time to start resolving this, take a fresh look at it. You can also see that the fence itself is actually starting to come apart, so for such a beloved infrastructure that's here in the city, it's actually starting to come apart, so if nothing else, I think it's time to take a look at this again, and Alderman Lewandowski did ask that Adam come to this meeting, which I appreciate him being here tonight, we might have a few questions for him. I did just want to mention, generally speaking, the phrases such as sidewalks to nowhere, you know, that's kind of an unimaginative, unhelpful phrase at this point that I think that the council has relied upon for years, but it's not really helping any of the residents who have repeatedly come up and spoken at that podium for years to hear that phrase, so I just don't think that that's actually benefiting anyone here. We did learn the history of the placement of the bushes and the fence last, or two weeks ago, and I think Adam has some information on that as well. We learned that the trees were planted at Alderman McGovern's request with his belief that the state and insurance required them, and we now know that that's not necessarily the case. So all I'm asking is that we take a fresh look at this, we think critically, we think about how we've arrived here, and we decide if this is where we want to continue to be, so I appreciate it, thanks, guys.
Mayor, can we call a question on this vote and then resolve the problem, let the second half of that after the vote?
We need the motion put on the floor first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you want to put the motion on the floor?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, that's fine, I didn't know if you needed to. It's actually the motion that we are recalling again this evening, May 17th, is a motion to approve removal of the split rail fence and 16 bushes on the east end of Community Park between 121st Street and 120th Street.
Okay, move by Alderman Begley, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski?
Key.
Regardless of this vote tonight on this, the issue here is whether tonight you're going to authorize take down this fence or not. I talked with Scott, the previous guy, and asked a little history on this, and it was his recommendation that that went up based on the traffic consultant from before, just got off the phone about 10 minutes before, that's why we based this on it. Regardless of this, the after plan of this is as we discussed, was coming up with an alternative path that they don't have to go through there, but a paved or gravel path down to the other part of the fence, if I'm correct, right? And it was going to be looked at and get somebody to draw that up.
Yeah, and I think taking the bushes out and the fence out is half the situation, I mean, if we just do that, we still don't have an answer to this, you know, to the problem, you know, getting there.
Relying on our public works director's research on this, I think it has to happen in chunks, right? So I think the first thing we need to do is to take out the bushes and take out the fence, and then we can understand what the traffic looks like there, because right now we don't know what the traffic looks like in terms of what it would look like once that's down. So in order to do a traffic count, in order to examine this closely, I think that's the first step that has to happen.
Well, if I could, if this does fail or pass, either way, you know, I think we still should consider looking at alternatives, you know, and not, you know.
Hundred percent agree.
Just so you're free on that, okay.
May I?
This is not, sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A lot of the comments from the community members are from the street looking into the park, you know, kids are leaving the street to go into the park, but a lot of us are voting not from the viewpoint of walking into the park there, but the safety of keeping kids from going off that bike path into the street.
Gotcha.
And so we're looking at it from two different angles on this, and so we should be part of that, but I'm recommending after tonight that we, this could go through public safety, this could go through parks, it's a park, if, you know, people are asking for a park entrance, then it needs to go through the parks, the park committee, or building and grounds, but, you know, there's too many, it could be roads, this thing has been discussed at roads, rec, safety, and building and grounds. It's ridiculous for the four of us, you know, who chair those four committees, there's got to be a plan put in place, and this go through the proper committee, and that's where we're going to need guidance from yourself.
No problem, okay, gotcha.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I checked with, so this item was deferred, excuse me, deferred from the last city council meeting specifically to seek the input of our subject matter experts, our professionals, so on the issue of safety, I just checked in with Chief Yatt, and Chief Yatt sent to me in an email, I quote, "As we talked, we don't really have a recommendation." I spoke with Adam, our public works director, and saw his memorandum on the issue, he sums it up very professionally, in my opinion, so he's deferring to the public works department.
Okay, all right. Any other question?
So, I have a question.
Sure.
So last time we were here, a couple weeks ago, we deferred it, right? So, and then I think your comments, Mr. Mayor, were like, let's figure out if we could come up with a reasonable solution. My only, my question, because I'm not on that committee, was there any type of like solutions that were banded about, or like Band-Aids on the situation?
I think just to what I'm getting here is that if this fails, then I will, maybe not tonight, but I will send it, assign it to one committee, I mean, it may take a combination of a couple people to get involved in this, to look the whole situation.
The question tonight was, we had all the discussion last week, is to vote yes or no on this, then go forward.
Right.
With a solution to the problem at hand.
Right.
As Alderman Key stated, there's numerous committees, this is at roads through Alderman McGovern, it was through safety with Alderman McGovern, it was through buildings and grounds, I believe, when Alderman Vassal was there. So recreation, that's a good place for it, they have an advisory board, they have Matt over there, let him get somebody to come over and look and get his recommendation, and a way to do that after this.
Okay, after this, I will assign it somewhere, you know, going forward, okay?
That way, that way you can get started.
I agree. This is, this is not the solution, this is just one part of this whole situation, so.
Mr. Mayor, on the question, do we have to vote on it, or can you just decide?
We need to vote on it because I'm sick of talking about this.
It's been moved to this committee, it's been moved tonight, it's been deferred to this committee.
Because it was deferred the last time?
Right.
Because otherwise it seems like no matter what we vote on, it's going to go back to another committee, it's almost like a wasted vote.
Right, I agree, but it's just waste.
It was very enlightening, though.
Perfect.
We learned a lot.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, just to say, it's not a wasted vote, it's just a vote on this, you take action tonight, we already agreed that after this vote regardless, we would look through recs and recreations, an alternative something to rectify the muddy path or whatever, to get rid of, to do something there, so if they did cross there, they go on the secondary down around to the other thing, and we put that in motion already, we're just voting on action tonight.
Exactly. Question?
Question's called.
Okay.
So I would actually like to have Adam step up, because I have a few questions for him if Alderman Lewandowski doesn't.
So, they, Heather, they've already called a question, so, my gosh.
I'm sorry?
You've already called a question, so we've got to vote on it.
Well, all right, I'll just, I'll let the regional know what the position is.
Gotcha, okay.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
No.
Alderman Clifford.
No.
Alderman Violet.
No.
Alderman Vassal.
No.
Alderman McGovern.
No.
Alderman McGrogan.
No.
Motion's not agreed to.
All right, so then I will, by the next meeting, I will assign this to a new form of, you know, a new way we're going to go with this.
We'll go on the rec, rec agenda for next one.
Not necessarily rec, it may not go to rec.
Well, whoever you decide.
Yeah, right, okay. Anything else here? Alderman Begley, anything else?
Oh, no, nothing further.
Thank you.
Planning zoning, Alderman McGovern?
No report.
Recreation, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first payment to Georgia's landscape in the amount of $6,407.10 for work completed on Misty Meadows Park project.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Right, Alderman Clifford, proposal construction?
Motion to approve more, payment for more instance engineering for services, various projects, an amount of $8,276.50.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is her second? Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
I attended a meeting this week with Adam and numerous contractors and had on discussion the roads, the punch lists for Route 83, we're finishing up, and the project that you mentioned earlier about the removal of the Regentland, Regentland Avenue medium, which is going to commence now on June 1st, be advised, probably one lane traffic each way during this, this project, it takes approximately, Adam, 30 days, they say, approximately 30 days start the completion hopefully, but they'll be starting that, and that is going to be going from Route 83 to 131st, 35th?
Fifth.
135th Street, so be aware with the bridge shutdown and the other traffic concession, especially over 127th and Central and that, and also if you haven't been that way, the bridge on Pulaski Avenue crossing the Cal Sag is also one lane and under construction, so you're sort of boxed in, so be aware, it's that summer.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to bring that up, I mean, it's unbelievable if you're coming from the north heading south, in fact, I just came down Cicero, and because of all these bridges, Cicero was backed up from 83 past 127th Street, and, you know, who's making all these decisions? Every bridge for like three miles is just about under construction, I mean, they're painting them, I mean, is, and the other thing I had, if this was a Payless Heights issue for what we're going to do with this medium strip, like, couldn't we postpone it to like, one of these bridges isn't under construction, because you can hardly get here?
Well, the reason we're doing it now is the school's out, starting next week, so we want to get it done.
They discussed all those issues.
Because right in front of Shepherd High School is a major part of it.
Plus, we've been working on it for nine years.
They got their schedule, we got ours, and theirs trumps ours, so I guess in that particular case, after this, there doesn't look anything out.
Yeah, well, we need others.
But I mean, whoever is, whoever does all these bridges, I mean, at the same time, they have to be, they must not have a car.
One of the problems is that some are county, some are county jurisdiction, some are state jurisdiction, and that's why.
It's a combination of both, you know, look at Harlem Avenue, that was last summer, they did a pretty good job and got us through that, but all in all, we'll get through it, so, but anyway, that's the end of my report.
Since Adam is here, I wanted to mention, I went to dinner with my daughter tonight, the country, and what a mess, I mean, we're actually involved in one of the things going on there, but how many projects are going on at that intersection all at once? Yeah, currently, because, I mean, everything's blacked out in every direction, you can't turn at one spot, I mean, we have, we have an interest in, I think, the northeast corner where we're changing our water intake, but there's, there's so much going on there.
There is.
Yeah.
There's a lot involved there, and it's broken down into four stages, so they're doing four quadrants at a time, pretty much, as far as changing the traffic. The first stage, right now, they are working on the northeast side of that intersection, and that's where our water main will be temporarily disconnected, we're going to receive temporary connection from ALSA through their water mains, but it's, they're redoing the entire culvert underneath that intersection, so that whole culvert's coming out, and you have the main Nycor gas feed line there, you've got our main water supply from ALSA there, you've got all the electrical poles there, you've got the intersection lighting and controls and so on, so all of it has to be removed, all of it has to be done in stages, because if you take the whole culvert out, you're breaking the leak, and also the ALSA, their water line is also rerouted during that project, so there's quite a bit of things happening, like you mentioned, and it will be divided into four different traffic control patterns in one lane in each direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a mess, and, you know, and we just know a little bit of it, we have a small part of it, but, you know, all our residents are seeing the mess, and, and it's good to know, thank you, Adam. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on that same point, just as an FYI, so the other day I had to go downtown, so I, from my home in Payless Heights, it said the fastest way was to go south to Sibley Boulevard and get on I-57 to go downtown, I mean, because of all the bridges and stuff, I mean, it's, I mean, I just can't believe that the state can, and all these different agencies, well, I can believe that it's government, I guess.
Big government.
Oh, one, one side note, we had our grand opening ribbon cutting. We attended with the NWRD of Lake Arrow, had just recently went to see the mayor dignitaries from NWRD on that stormwater project there. That was a, a few million dollar project that was, we were involved with for over 20 years to get that done, and we're glad to say that X amount of families, I don't know the exact number, came off the floodplain, uh, area up there, which will be a savings under flood insurance and everything, so.
It was about, it was about 70 homes, which each one is probably paying somewhere in the excess of a thousand dollars a year in floods.
So they won't have to pay. Through the roads construction here, the mayor and everybody in, through the town here and the NWRD were able to accomplish that, and the ribbon was finally cut and it's finalized the project, so something good came out of that.
Great.
That's it.
One for big business. Okay. Places for veterans and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No items on the agenda this evening. However, I'd like to report that, uh, the committee has completed their work regarding video gaming and will not be moving forward. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Special committees, business and economic development?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to announce that Take Five oil change at 128th and Harlem, which is in the previous Jiffy Loop spot, is now open.
Oh, great.
The grand opening is actually tomorrow, but today, the lights were on and the guys were out there, and I went and had my oil changed. And the, uh, their business model is that you don't leave the car. And actually, in other oil change places, that's been a bone of contention, because you leave your vehicle and there could, you know, some people get worried about they're leaving their things in the car.
No.
Well, this, you're in there, and you don't leave your car, they bring the things to you, and they, there's a computer right there, and, uh, they're very nice, and we wish them well as they, or, you know, join our business community.
How long did it take, Five?
10 minutes.
Take that?
Take Five, I don't think refers to five-minute oil change, but. All right, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Cable TV, Alderman McGovern?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any other business?
I just have one thing, Mayor.
Sure.
I just want to touch on something that was, I would discuss this evening with regard to the fences. I would have loved to have had Adam step up just to confirm a few bullet points, but apparently procedurally, that was not permitted. Um, I was going to have Adam just confirm, and this will be helpful moving forward, I think, for the next things, where this is important information. Um, the, number one is that the state of Illinois did not recommend the placement of bushes or a fence. The state of Illinois did not recommend any obstruction to that park. The Illinois Department of Transportation actually recommended the placement of two ADA crosswalks at 120th and 121st, which city council decided to not proceed with the placement of. Um, the curve of the bike path at the southeast end of the park is further in distance to the 76th Avenue Street than the curve of the bike path where there's actually open access. And no expert or agency recommended obstruction. It was voted on by city council, it was actually not voted on by council or committee. Um, actually, just one alderman directed the former public works director to place the obstruction. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
That's helpful. Thank you.
I suggest you to relook at that. There is no, and there is no intersection over there that can possibly be ADA compliant.
Okay, well, as we look at the new, we'll handle it.
Thank you.
Okay. See, any other old business? Citizens wishing to ask questions? Yes.
I, I guess what I'd say too, I, in fact, that you would not let Adam speak in regards to present, but he was able to come up and talk about the other items on the agenda.
Because the item was already moved to vote on. That's why, it was procedural, that's why.
And I would just like to point out that this is a decorative fence. This is not meant to stop a car. Like, that's not the purpose of this kind of fence. So you can't say that it's helping the street, that this is a decorative fence.
Okay, thank you. Any new business? You entertain a motion to adjourn? Some will? All in favor?
Aye.